Sergeant Arms, please call our meeting in order. Thank you. Again, I would like to welcome you guys to our May 8th, 2018 Regular Council Meeting. Our Chaplain of the Day is Reverend Laura F. Geddes at St. Mary's Episcopal Cathedral. She was invited by myself, Berlin Boyd, and we will hear from her.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for these elected leaders who have been entrusted with the care of this bright and hope-filled city of ours, Memphis, Tennessee. Beauty, creativity, and compassion flows through our Memphis community, and we honor and give thanks for the good and faithful work done and being done by your leaders and the citizens of this community. And yet, the needs and services this community yearns for are great and call out for us all to look to you, O God, as we turn as well to one another for guidance in responding to the brokenness that still exists. Bestow upon our city leaders the courage to enact difficult policies which seek to create a just city for all of Memphis's citizens and those seeking refuge here. Bestow upon each of them the courage to respond to our shared community identity, even at the cost of alienating those corporations and individuals who have put their own self-interest above the interests of this community and all of her citizens. Continue to open the ears of this City Council to hear the cries and pleas of her people who lament against racially unjust policies, laws, and practices, and heeding those cries, continue the work begun for more equitable justice for all. May we continue to see that divine sacredness in every human being. And finally, we ask your blessing upon this meeting as the council reflects and discerns the needs attended to in the multitude of divisions of service. We pray for wisdom, not rhetoric, generosity, not indifference, and justice, not patronage. May their leadership be a remarkable witness to the positive possibility of political discourse in our nation's fractured system. For the vast and varied ways these elected officials represent the hearts and minds of our city, we give thanks. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice and justice. Councilman Jones, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. By the City Council, greetings. Be hereby known that Reverend Laura F. Geddes, in recognition of a life of exemplary qualities, outstanding service to the city, meritorious involvement in humanitarian affairs, and demonstrated concern for governmental processes, has been appointed the Chaplain of the Day by the Memphis City Council and is hereby entitled to all of the honors, sites, honors, rights, privileges, and prerogatives appertaining to the office and to the display of this certificate given under this seal this 8th day of May 2018, signed by Chairman Berlin Boyd. Congratulations and thank you for the sortness with your prayer today. Small total. Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Madam Comptroller, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council members Brown, Colvet, Conrad, Ford, Fully Love, Hetchpeth, Jones, Morgan, Morrison, Robinson, Swerengen, Chairman Boyd.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller.
My pleasure.
We will go to our approval of previous meeting minutes. Councilman Ford.
As chair of the minutes have been read from the previous meeting, I find them in order and I'd like to move their adoption electronic.
Thank you. This item's been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilwoman Robinson. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for our previous minute meetings. Minute, uh, meeting minutes. Thank you. All right. Council members, please cast your votes.
Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hetchpeth, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. All right. Again, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to our May 8th Council Meeting. If you guys care to speak on any item on our council agenda, please see our Sergeant at Arms and get a card. Please write legibly, write your name and address, and I will, and turn those cards back in. Make sure you write legibly so I can read it, and turn the card in prior to the item in which we are calling and which you want to speak on. I will also like to welcome two of our council, uh, youth council members. We have from District 6, Kayla Smith, and we have from District 7, Sidney Collins. We want to welcome the guys to our City Council Meeting. Thank you. And items that will be held from our council agenda, Item 3 will be held for two weeks. Item 18 has been withdrawn. We do have our same night minutes request in our add-ons. Our add-ons are as follow, Items 43 through 49, and we have same night minute requests for Items 31, 32, 48, and 49. And we did move those to accept on this council agenda in our executive session, so that has been handled already. All right. And now we will go, Madam Comptroller, please call Item Number 1.
Item Number 1 is a presentation by the Memphis Youth City Council Members.
Councilman Colvet.
Please the body, Ms. Nau would like to make a presentation.
Good afternoon. My name is Sneha Sharma, the Chair of the Youth Council, and thank you all for letting me speak here today. As we begin to wrap this year up, we want to ensure that the last month's polls are focused together. From February through now, the Youth Council has been focusing on gun violence and student protest, more specifically, how our community, the next generation, the future, looked at gun violence as an issue that they wanted to focus on, and how they plan to meaningfully contribute on this debate. As representatives of our city, the Youth Council has some proposals that we'd love to share. These proposers, proposals are not silver bullets that will completely eliminate the problem. We are simply trying to add guideposts on the existing roadmap established by the city leaders to create a safer Memphis, and we truly believe it starts here with the council's work. The Youth Council hereby humbly requests that following last year's domestic violence proposal, the city reevaluate and/or enact a weapons under disability ordinance that mirrors or defers to the federal law by prohibiting the possession of a weapon for those who have been previously convicted of serious domestic violence or are convicted of, or under the indictment for a felony crime that is considered a disability by federal law, but perhaps not one yet by Tennessee law. The Youth Council also hereby suggests increased awareness campaigns for safe gunkeeping practices within households due to the high correlation of personal gun ownership and homicide and/or suicide. This can be achieved through exhibitions, sponsored events, partnering with big Memphis companies, digital media campaigns, et cetera. So as long as it's happening, the Youth Council would love to play a vital part in spreading the message to youth through the Memphis Education Board and high school platform. Specifically for the Youth Council, messages can be spread in schools through events including large-sized picture boards, skits, instructional videos that illustrate how easy gun access or not proper safekeeping can result in accidental usage. Additionally, we can get outs of people promising to keep their guns safely inside their homes. Some of the most dangerous things happen just by miskeeping it, not because of actual intentional use. The Youth Council also hereby proposes a specific addition to the previous initiative, Number 3. We call this the Guns and Roses March. This will seek to promote peaceful marching, and what we'll do is we'll call city leaders, church leaders, community leaders, students, grandparents, and many more to attend and share their voices through many different platforms, art, speeches, music, and much more. Along with raising awareness about gun violence and safe practices, the marchers will distribute roses on the streets plagued by gun violence. This is to symbolize the peaceful means that can be used to resolve issues. We sincerely hope that the council will take some of these suggestions into review as existing gun violence in the city goes unabated. Thank you for allowing me to serve as Chair this year and Abigail Costilla as co-chair. I would also like to give special thanks to Mayor Jim Strickland, Council Chairman Boyd, and all of the council, Youth Services Director Ike Griffith, and to Ms. Thompson. I will never have enough words to thank you for inspiring us every single day. From each phone call to a group meet planned, you made us who we are today. She's the true powerhouse behind the city. Much gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Colvet.
Can I have those presentations, please? Wow. I tell you, if there was ever folks that were nervous about the future and our youth, I think y'all have gone a long way to reassuring us that the youth is engaged, interested, and above all, hopeful in the change. I want to thank y'all for serving. Y'all could've spent so much time playing sports or other academic pursuits, but instead, you spent your time to learn government and learn how government works. Passions run high, passions within issues run high, but you find common ground together to put together an incredible document, and I look forward potentially seeing parts of it in our Public Safety Committee. So without further ado, thank you. Y'all will step forward. We have certificates of appreciation. Ms. Abigail Costilla, District 1, please come forward. Jesus Avina, District 2. Justin Sandifer, District 3. Karia Amador, District 4. Brianna Ray, District 5. Kayla Smith, District 6. Sidney Collins, District 7. Darren Smith, District 8-1, Super District 8-1. Talon Boyd, District 8-2. Cameron Gray, Super District 8-3. Super District's working hard. Sneha Serena, District 9-1. Oyama Hampton, District 9-2. And last but not least, Wyatt Charles, District 9-3.
Colleagues, our Memphis Youth City Council.
Thank you very much. As we close out, and in an outstanding year, I'd like to just share a few little facts about our outgoing council members. Craigmont High School, Abigail Costilla will be attending the University of Tennessee at Knoxville. Jesus Avina, Ridgeway, District 2, will be attending Rhodes College. Justin Standiford, Whitehaven High School, will be attending Jackson State University. Brianna Ray, Memphis Catholic High School, will be advancing to be a senior in high school. Mitchell High School, Kayla Smith, will be moving into her senior year at Mitchell High School. Memphis Academy of Health Sciences, Sidney Collins, valedictorian, will be attending the University of Memphis. Douglas High School, District 8, Johnny Houston, will be attending Paul Quinn College. Hollis F. Price, Talon Boyd, will be attending Clark Atlanta University. District 9, Sneha Sharma, our Chair, will be attending the University of Pennsylvania. District 9-2, Memphis University School, Oyama Hampton, will be attending the University of Tennessee at Knoxville. And finally, District 9-3, Wyatt Charles, our youngest member, will be moving into 10th grade at White Station High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Ford, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you very much. I'll be very quick. I appreciate the speaker. The speaker was intelligent, articulate, cogent, had ideas well thought out. Not everybody can do that at the podium. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I've done this before, and I think it'd be apropos to do it again. I'd like to move to suspend the rules for the purposes of adding an item, Item 50 being a resolution considering all recommendations passed by the Memphis Youth City Council, so that it can be put in the record.
All right, it's been moved properly. Second, seeing no objection, let's just do a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, picking the chair, it's unanimous. That item passes. It'll be special item number 1, Item 50 on our add-ons. So congratulations. All right, Madam Comptroller, please call Item Number 2.
Item Number 2 is a resolution approving a special use permit located on the south side of Leroy Avenue approximately 648 feet plus or minus to the Ozon Street Leroy Avenue intersection, containing 11,200 square feet of the 3.32 acre site in the residential single-family district. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. It was held from April 24th. The case number is SUP 17-214.
Councilman Colvet. All right, there you go.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our applicants present may have your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, yes, sir. Belinda Bodie, 1022 Highland Colony Parkway, Ridgeland, Mississippi, 39157.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. To the audience, this is Item Number 2, Case SUP 17-214. Is there any opposition? Opposition to Item Number 2. Seeing now, Mr. Chairman, this case was heard in committee. It did receive favorable recommendation. With that eyes, so move it to the floor.
You'd like to turn the clip, please? All right, it's been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilman Morrison. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for Item Number 2.
Brown, no. Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hetchpeth, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call Item Number 4.
Item Number 4 is a resolution approving a planned development with three development tracks, north side of Madison Avenue plus or minus 224 feet west of North Avalon Street, west side of North Avalon Street plus or minus 45 feet north of Madison Avenue, and south side Court Avenue plus or minus 160 feet west of North Willette Street, containing 4.22 acres in the commercial mixed-use-3 residential urban midtown overlay and Evergreen historic district overlay districts. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is PD 18-05. Companion cases SAC 18-01 and SAC 18-02.
Councilman Colvet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I see our applicant's present may have your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Fay, The Prime Development Group, 7520 Capital Drive, Suite 200 Germantown, Tennessee.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, Item Number 4, this is Case PD 18-05, Item 4. Is there any opposition?
Do have one card. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, there is opposition. This case was heard upstairs, or down here in committee. It did receive favorable recommendation. With that eyes, so move it to the floor.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilman Morgan. It's on the floor. I will call this card up. I have Lawrence Ferry. Lawrence Ferry. Please state your name and address for the record, sir. At the end of that, we will give you, your time will start ticking.
My name is Lawrence Ferry. My address is 3425 Pine Break Cove, 38125. I do have copies of what I'm going to be saying, if I can pass them out, have them passed out. Thank you.
Your time is ticking, sir.
Okay. First, I'd like to say, I'm not sure of the appropriateness of this presentation this morning. I've noticed for the last week and especially the last two days, there's been a plethora of Memphis light gas and water trucks in and around the area of the new development. Having owned property there for many decades, we never get Memphis light gas and water there, and now we just have them overflowing, putting down markers, measuring, and painting different symbols on the street and telephone poles. So one might think this thing has already been approved. As I said earlier, I'm here today to speak in opposition to the Madison Midtown Planned Development, which you might better know is Number PD 1805 and 1802. 1544 Madison Partners is requesting the closure, or as they say, vacating a portion of North Willette Street right-of-way, as well as a unnamed east-west public alley. This description sounds unobtrusive and maybe even inconsequential. That is, of course, if you don't own and operate a going concern whose address is the only address on that section of North Willette, in addition to the unnamed public alleyway, which runs the entire length of my northernmost property line. For the past 50 years, let me say that differently, since 1968, my brother-in-law and I have either operated a car wash and/or owned the properties at Zero North Willette and 20 North Avalon. We know firsthand the hardships, struggles, and challenges of our midtown neighborhood. As a small business owner in the personal service industry of car washes, we know and understand the mantra and basic business strategy of location, location, location. This mantra is well-known in the real estate industry, and I have no doubt it is totally understood by planned development partners as well. My problem is my location, location, location is being eliminated, altered, or blocked. We operate the only business with an address on the proposed North Willette closure. My business address again is Zero North Willette. In addition to the unnamed public alley, which runs the entire length of my northernmost property line, these closures and vacating a public right-of-way will permanently and negatively impact access to my property and my business. Having been a lifelong Miffian and having personally operated a successful business at this location for the past 50 years, nobody needs to tell my brother-in-law of the difficult challenges that our midtown neighborhood has witnessed and endured. This newfound attention to our, to us, however, is somewhat of importance and almost thrilling. However, now as he approaches his senior citizen status of age 74, he faces business closure in his own neighborhood through no fault of his own. He has developed a loyal customer base over 50 years. Understand that many business manager, expert, claim that this type of customer loyalty is a consequence of leadership. I certainly believe George Handworker, my brother-in-law, has been a midtown leader for several decades. You know another business or midtown who can claim to 50 years of operation at the same location? Now, before I get a proverbial nosebleed from being up here on my soapbox, I'd like to offer my condolences to you, the City Council. I realize that this is the case of David versus Goliath. We are clearly the small player. We believe these developers can create big revenues and bring possible greater good to our oft-forgotten midtown neighborhood. Ever should they be allowed, yet induced, to come into our neighborhood and destroy one of the oldest members. It's not feasible to sell snow cones in a West Texas snow, sandstorm. I assure you, operating a car wash in a construction dust bowl for 200-plus apartments is an impossibility. My hope and request is that this council will not approve the vacating of the right-of-way on the portion of North Willette. I further request that the east-west unnamed public alley remain just that, a public alley. I assure you, this is no fun to stand in front of you and read this today. The current LUCB and OPD recommendations in front of you, if granted, will surely mean the closure of a 50-year car wash operations and the end of a vital income stream for my respected brother-in-law. We've been unsuccessful on multiple attempts to reach a settlement with 1544 Midtown Partners. They know they are Goliath, and we are David. Resolution lies solely with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Colvet. All right, applicant, you have five minutes. Present your case and/or rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In dealing with this piece of property, everyone is very familiar with this site. We're assembling three tracts of land. In order to make the project viable, we've got to connect those three pieces of property. Our original application to the Land Use Control Board had various changes made due to city engineering and discussions with staff on the alley on North Willette. City engineer elected to allow us to close part of North Willette and leave half of that right-of-way for the car wash. We also are not closing the alley near the car wash. If you've been on this particular piece of property, this particular layout of the car wash is that people enter the car wash and queue in on Avalon. There's two buildings. They'll still be able to maintain their access from Avalon, go through the car wash, make a U-turn, and come back out on Avalon. We do not believe that this is going to be detrimental. In fact, ladies and gentlemen, we believe this is probably going to be a windfall, because this is the only car wash in the area, and we're about to add 230 new apartments. There're going to be 200 people. How many cars are going to need somewhere to wash? And they're going to be right there. We intend on providing that. Now, aside from that, when we were at Land Use Control Board, we had a discussion as well on the access through the alley. And I'd like to thank Councilman Worth Morgan for getting involved in this, because he also met with the people from the PNH, some of our adjoining neighbors, met with them, and came back to us and said, "Hey, what would happen if we did this?" And as a, as a part of that discussion, we met back out in the field with our neighbors, and we added a second alley. So now, the alley that currently goes to our property will go away, but the developers are adding a new alley that will come off Court Street. That road will continue to function so that our neighbors with PNH will be able to enjoy that access that they've had for decades. In the various discussions we've had with staff and some of the emails, we have had a overwhelmingly positive response from our neighbors in these changes that we've made this plan. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank Councilman Morgan for that help. It also proved that by him meeting with the neighbors and meeting with us, he was that, that bond that made this project work better. We were able to amend it. Don had to make a few friendly amendments to the conditions, but other than that, ladies and gentlemen, we're about to take a piece of property that has been sitting dormant for over 10 years, and we're about to add new life to it. We don't need new commercial there. We've got plenty of commercial. We've got plenty of building. What we need in midtown is people, and this plan is going to do that. We're going to We're going to change this neighborhood to the point, and as you've seen the elevations in your packet, this is a first-class operation, and the landscaping you're seeing on the plan. We're about to take this dormant piece of property and turn it into something that you've asked us to do for decades. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Colvet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Morgan, I want to thank you for getting together. New developments like this are big and require a lot of input from citizens. You worked really hard to bring all this together. I want to thank you for a good development. You've bent over backwards, I feel like, in meeting the needs and the questions of the community. I'm sorry, Mr. Ferry, are you still with us? I thank you for coming down, sir, and I may be the only crazy salesman in the room, but I think with the dust bowl, I think you have an excellent opportunity with your car wash, and I hope you the very best of success in your endeavor. I, I actually think there's opportunity there, and I hope you are quite successful. But with that, I stand strongly in support of this, this project.
Councilman Colvet, thank you for the comment. Councilman Morgan, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the kind words, and like Councilman Colvet, I stand, I stand in strong support of this project, the work that's been done, both from the developers and y'all's team, as well as meeting with the neighbors, and that everybody, despite early on having some differences of opinion, kept cool heads, were able to reasonably work through to a decision and to, I think, a, ultimately, what's a better product and a better fit for everybody. And I thank you for your time, especially the investment y'all willing to make in this neighborhood. This project across from Minglewood in Midtown has an opportunity to be a game changer in terms of a positive anchor that can help move the neighborhood forward, help move development forward in a way that still fits Midtown. So I'm looking forward to it, and if there are any other instances that come up, let's, let's not hesitate to bring them forward and see if we can't sit down again and deal with it, but hopefully urging a positive vote from my colleagues today, and thank you for your time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Sing no other council members in the queue. Council members, please cast your votes for item number four. Madam Comptroller, please show me recusing myself on this item.
Brown, no. Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hetchpeth, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd recused. Councilmember Ford abstained.
That item passes.
Thank you.
Madam Comptroller, please call item number five.
Item number five is a resolution approving a street and alley closure located on North Willette between Madison Avenue and an unnamed east-west public alley. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is SAC eighteen dash zero one. Companion cases are SAC eighteen dash zero two and PD eighteen dash zero five.
Councilman Colvet?
Thank you very much. Are our applicants still present? Go ahead and get your name and address again for the record.
Michael Fay, Prime Development Group, seventy-five twenty Capital Drive, Suite two hundred, Germantown, Tennessee.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to item number five, SAC eighteen oh one? Item number five.
Not have any cards.
Standing. Mr. Chairman, this case was also heard in committee and received a favorable recommendation. With that, I so move it to the floor.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Sing no council members in the queue. Please cast your votes for item number five. Madam Comptroller, please show me recusing myself on this item.
Brown, no. Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford abstained. Hetchpeth, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd recused.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item number six.
Item number six is a resolution approving a street alley closure located north of Madison Avenue and south of Court Avenue. The alley extends from North Avalon Street on the east to North McNeil Street on the west, containing zero-point-zero-seven-four acre or three-thousand-two-hundred-thirty-four-point-five-seven feet. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is SAC eighteen dash zero two. Companion cases SAC eighteen dash zero one and PD eighteen dash zero five.
Councilman Colvet?
Chairman, name and address again, please.
Michael Fay, Prime Development Group, seventy-five twenty Capital Drive, Suite two hundred, Germantown, Tennessee.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, item number six, SAC eighteen oh two. Is there any opposition? Item number six.
Don't have any cards.
Thank you very much. Seeing now, Mr. Chairman, this case was heard in committee and did receive a favorable recommendation. With that, I so move it to the floor.
It's been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Sing no council members in the queue. Please cast your votes for item number six. Madam Comptroller, please show me recused on this item. Thank you.
Brown, no. Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford abstained. Hetchpeth, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd recused.
That item passes.
Thank you.
Madam Comptroller, please call item number seven.
Item number seven is a resolution approving a special use permit for a vehicle repair shop located at ten-five-four Firestone Avenue, northwest corner of Firestone Avenue and Breedlove Avenue. Leased area containing plus or minus seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot building on point-six-seven-nine-acre site in the commercial mixed-use district. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is SUP seventeen dash zero two.
Councilman Colvet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is our applicant, can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Robert Estes, Parker Estes and Associates, thirty-four sixty Ridge Meadow Parkway.
Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, item number seven, this is case SUP seventeen dash zero two. Is there opposition?
I do have one card.
We do have opposition. Mr. Chairman, this case was heard upstairs, was heard downstairs here in committee. It did receive a negative recommendation, but I so move it to the floor for discussion and vote.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by... Seconded by Councilman Morgan. Okay, we will go ahead and get our comments. We have Dr. Atwater. We will give you five minutes, and we'll also give our applicant five minutes as well. So state your name and address for the records, and your time will begin.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Carlita Atwater. My address is ten-nine-eight Firestone, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-oh-seven. I am the Executive Director of the New Chicago Community Partnership Revitalization Plan, CDC. We, the resident of the New Chicago community, have a petition signed by over three-hundred individuals stating that we do not want this New Chicago repair shop in our neighborhood. It is conducive of individuals hanging around, smoking marijuana, drinking beer, using profanity, throwing trash down, and being disrespectful to the young girls in the neighborhood. I personally think that this is a junkyard, not a repair shop. Ten-fifty-four Firestone has been an eyesore and a blighted facility for over five years. This site has been the home of abandoned, dismantled, unsavory, trash-filled cars and rodent-infested areas. Rats and snakes has been observed running around the site. We submitted over forty photos of this blighted facility located at ten-fifty-five, fifty-four Firestone, and we would like for those to be viewed as I speak. The owner and Mr. Lopez has been, has cleaned up the property since February twenty-first, twenty-eighteen, because they want this special permit. This property is against the Memphis Blight Elimination Charter, the Blight Authority of Memphis, the Neighborhood Preservation, Inc., and Memphis City Beautiful, but none of these organizations addressed the blight. By removing the rodent-infested cars, it has caused rats to enter into the Firestone Union Hall located at ten-thirty-six Firestone, which housed the first African-American history museum. Never have we ever had any problems with rats or rodents. The new code enforcement regulation did not force the removal of blight caused by these cars filled with trash and debris. Residents and homes are sighted every day in the New Chicago area, but this facility that sits on the main street on the corner of Firestone and Breedlove never was sighted to our dismay. We are trying to revitalize this neighborhood in two thousand and eighteen. The owners are living in this commercial building located at ten-fifty-four Firestone Avenue. They have been living in this property for three years. We have ten videos to verify that. This living space is not deemed for safe living and is not fitting for humans to live. It is against the Fire and the Health Department codes. We also have ten letters from residents that can substantiate these incidents of living arrangement. Mr. Lopez or the owners do not have a business license to sell cars or repair cars for the last five years. He has been repairing cars and selling cars for the last five years. The city of Memphis requires a business license to carry out business, and this was never monitored by the city. The owner of ten-thousand, ten-fifty-four Firestone have not paid Chevy County property taxes in over twenty-four years, and it was not their oversight. Chevy County never charged them taxes for the twenty-four years. This is a violation of all the residents in the New Chicago area and the city of Memphis residents who have paid their taxes and lost their property through Chevy County tax sale. This is not a car repair shop that was grandfather clause in, and they are trying to get a new special permit to open this new car repair shop, this junkyard. This is a personal insight to me and the residents of New Chicago. We walk around the community cleaning up the neighborhood. We've been doing it for almost fif- fifteen years. We ask that you do not grant this special use permit, because the applicant and the engineer know that under the new codes regarding the CMI, a car repair shop cannot go into the neighborhood on this site. We respectfully ask that you do not pass this permit. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our, let's see, we do have our applicant. You do have time, Mr. Applicant?
Yes, sir. This site has been used as an automobile repair shop off and on now for several years, going way back to the...
Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Sorry, Robert Estes, Parker Estes and Associates, thirty-four sixty Ridge Meadow Parkway.
Thank you.
Back in the late fifties, this was a gas station and an automobile repair shop. There's been others that have been there and closed, have been there and closed throughout the years. I knew, I saw, seen photographs in two thousand and eight where there was an automobile repair shop going on on this facility. The Lopez's started renting this space, my understanding is about five years ago, where they started bringing in cars and stockpiling them. Then later on, they started doing repair work and so forth on these automobiles. They were not familiar with the zoning codes that were, would not require, which would not be approved through that process because of the zoning code changes with the UDC that took place in two thousand and ten. Prior to that, automobile repair shops were allowed in that zoning district. They have since cleaned up the site. I started coming to the site in December of two thousand and sixteen and have made three or four different site visits, and at all times, I have never seen the materials that were shown on those photographs scattered throughout that site. All there was just complete whole vehicles being repaired. The Lopez's are in full agreement with every, all the conditions that the Land Use Control Board approved for this site, including the four-month period in which they would have to do curb-cut improvements, replace sidewalks, bring handicap accessibility to the sidewalks, bring in decorative fencing and landscaping for the site. If they do not abide by those regulations, then their conditional use permit would be rejected or revoked, and we are asking for your approval for this site.
Are you done, sir?
Sir.
Thank you. All right, we do have council members in the queue, and I am in the queue as well. Council members, as you know, this is in District Seven and in Super District Eight. I've been out there several times, and I, I hope you guys would not vote in favor for this item. This particular location is in question, and, sir, you, you said that the Lopez's were, was not familiar with the law. However, that's not our problem. One thing that I, I will say is that it's a questionable use. You can drive over there at the corner of Breedlove and Firestone at some twelve o'clock at night and see lights on and people walking around the lot. I know they're not working on cars at midnight, because you'd never see nobody with tools in their hand. So that's questionable within itself. And you have children in that community walking those streets, and I just think that use, or whatever activities they have going on in that location, is not acceptable. And I will be voting no, and I urge my colleagues to please vote no with me, and I hate the fact that individuals go into certain communities in our city, and they only want to abide by the law when the law makes them abide by the law. I will send a message to the Lopez's. Please respect our community, just like you would respect any other community. Every community in the city of Memphis deserves the same treatment. Mr. Whitehead, I, I hope that after this item fails, we can get code enforcement out there tomorrow to start citing every infraction that's known to man. Let's see what it takes to get this site cleaned up. Thank you. Councilman Brown, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you. New Chicago was one of the most striving communities there was at one time. It was a very productive area with citizens who were working with some of the major blue-collar industry in the area. It was loaded with teachers, educators, businesspeople. Good residents that lived in the area that made a difference. Some of ours, top-notch citizens, were in that area. And now, with the attraction of the African-American Museum at the old Firestone Union Hall, that makes a difference. It's one of the focal points when people come into Memphis. They want to go to this museum, a great museum, which sits in the heart of North Memphis. Thing is, that this, this New Chicago has always been on the drawing table through housing and community development, as revenue was put in that area is still there. The money is still on the table to revitalize the district itself. Thing is, is that, you know, with, with, what's going on now is it's good that the community works together to keep these blighted-type businesses, blighted housings, you want to positively clean this cleanliness in that area, and this is the only way that you do it. But the thing is, there's several businesses going to come in the... But the thing is, there's several businesses that's going to come in the New Chicago area that land down the street, across the street from First T Golf, Golf Academy, that is going to be used. Remember, we gave up Manassas, the property from Manassas High School, to give, to bring it back, bring it back on that side of the street. A positive townhouses, we're going to put that there. Everything is going to happen on Firestone Boulevard. It was the Boulevard, and now it's going to be brought back. And I want to thank Dr. Bowden and the associates for coming over there with you, Doctor, that come over. They're going to do some things in the area as well. But there is things that's going to happen in the area through housing and community development. It was on the table when Lisbon was there, it was still on the table, the plans for that particular area. Thank you. Please, don't vote for that, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Colvett, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank everybody for coming out, taking time away from work and your families to share your thoughts and your, I guess, negative feelings towards this project. When running into something like this, I listen strongly to what our Super District colleagues say, or individual, single-member districts say, and then I look at it through the planning and zoning process, and it is quite clear that some of us may be big property rights guys, but it's very clear here that the use is completely inappropriate for this area, and we should vote to strongly reject it. I stand with our chairman to send a message to them first thing in the morning to cease and desist. New Chicago is on the upswing, and we will do everything we can to help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Colvett. Councilman Ford, you're recognized, sir.
I'll be very quick. I'm also voting no, but I just wanted Dr. Atwater to know, I'm going to tell you the same thing that I told the Youth City Council. Everything that you said was intelligent, articulate, cogent, well-thought-out. Emotions were not involved, just the facts and the truth, and I do appreciate that very much. And I see that you also brought other supporters. I see a couple people from West Joshua Walker Homes. I see a lot of great folks out here. So, look, this just shows that other neighborhoods care about other neighborhoods. And I sincerely hope, and not to mention the landfills, I don't want to go too far off, but it's like what you said, Mr. Boyd, they'll find either District 3, 4, 6, or 7 to find things that the neighborhood does not necessarily want at all. And it started at the beginning of this year, and I will repeat what I said at the beginning. We started off this year very well, but the first thing in front of us was a landfill. And it was voted down. Then the landfill moved to another neighborhood. It got voted down. Now it's over here in Ms. Robinson and mine's backyard. I think it got, I think the conversation about that is over, but the conversation shouldn't even happen in the first place. If it's not going to be in one place, don't try to bring it to another neighborhood, please. Please don't do that. And don't find, and I don't use race in anything, but don't find somebody that may be the same hue as me or Ms. Robinson to go try to push somebody else's agenda for 10 pieces of silver. Don't do that. Don't insult me, because I will put that person's name out. I do not mind name dropping. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Ford. Councilwoman Fully Love, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. It's wonderful to see all of the young people that have come here this afternoon saying that they will not take it anymore. And, you know, I'm glad to see that. Sir, you have started something, I guess, or been involved in something that's not going to take place ever, because you, what you've done is created a very blight kind of area in that community, and they're not going to take it anymore. It's wonderful to see that all of you have come here and you're telling them, these people, that you're not going to take it anymore. And, yeah. And I think that's a wonderful thing. Sir, you're going to have to take your business somewhere else, put it somewhere, maybe next to your house. Yeah. And, and, and do, deal with it like that. Again, I said, I'm so happy to see that you're here, the young people that are here, because these are the young people that are being affected. You know, we're young people all over this city, not just in North Memphis, but all over this city are being affected by some, some things that you and others are doing. And they're not going to take it anymore, and I'm so glad about that. Congratulations, young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fully Love. Councilman Jones, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments that were already expressed, but I'm, one thing I want to say to the applicant, it's hard to overcome what your past actions have been, and if you look at a site and see that they have operated in a manner that was not welcoming to the neighborhood, it said to me from, from, from the beginning that they were not going to be a good neighbor. You know, there was one photo that you can see a house in the background, and I would want to know if the person that owned that building, would they be comfortable if somebody else had a facility in the state of disrepair that, that was adjacent to them? And I would, I would offer not. I'm also encouraged, young people, this is government in action. This, the city of Memphis does not belong to the 13 members on this dis or the mayor. This city belongs to you. And the only way that things get done, the only way that things get done is by you voicing your opinion. So, one of the things that I'm encouraged that this council, this is not the first time that we listen to the voices of our community. We may not necessarily agree on everything, but we listen, but, but stay encouraged if, you know, there's going to be other issues that come before us. I want you all to be as visible as you are today in any issue that affects you, your surroundings, where you live, where you work, where you play. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. There, there are no more council members in the queue. Council members, please cast your votes for item number seven. Council members, please cast your votes for item number seven. Adam Camps, please show the votes.
Trying to make sure the vote's correct, sir. Thank you. Brown, no. Colvett, no. Conrad, no. Ford, no. Fully Love, no. Hetchpath, no. Jones, no. Morgan, no. Morrison, no. Robinson, no. Swerengen, no. Chairman Boyd, no.
It is with pleasure that item fails.
You did a good job.
Camps, please call item number eight.
Item number eight is a resolution approving an amendment to the Witten I-4D Plan Development located on the north side of Macon Avenue, plus or minus 790 feet west of Witten Road, containing 0.92 acres, 4,075 square feet, PD 05-320. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is PD 18-12.
Councilman Colvett.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Applicant, can I have your name and address for the record, please?
Tim McCaskill, 7891 State Hills Boulevard.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, item number eight, case PD 18-12, item number eight. Is there any opposition?
No cards.
No opposition. Mr. Chairman, this case was heard in committee and did receive a favorable recommendation. With that, I so move it to the floor.
All right. It has been moved by Councilman Colvett, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Saying no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number eight.
Brown, yes. Colvett, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Hetchpath, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
All right, item passes. Madam Camps, please call item number nine.
Item number nine is a resolution approving a plan development located at 11625 and 11811 Highway 64, containing 152.34 acres in the Conservation Agriculture and Conservation Agriculture Flood Claim Districts, and PD 93-56CO. The following item was heard and a recommendation made by the Land Use Control Board on April 12, 2018. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is PD 18-01.
Councilman Colvett.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, can I have your name and address for the record, please? Mr. Bix.
Nathan Bix, Birch Porter &amp; Johnson, 130 North Court, here on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, item number nine, case PD 18-01. Is there any opposition?
No opposition.
No cards, no opposition. Mr. Chairman, thank you. This case was heard in committee. It did receive a favorable recommendation. I so move it to the floor.
All right. It has been moved by Councilman Colvett, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Saying no council members in the queue, council members, please cast your votes for
Brown, yes.
Vote a yes.
Brown, yes. Colvett, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Hetchpath, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes.
Please show Councilwoman Fully Love.
Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Councilwoman Fully Love, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
All right, item passes. Madam Camps, please call item number 10.
Item number 10 is an ordinance designating the area Historic Overlay District generally bounded by Lick Creek on the north, North Watkins on the east, the properties along Forest Avenue on the south, and I-240 north on the west in the residential urban and residential urban districts. Sea Boundary Map Attachment for area, up for third and final reading. This ordinance is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is STHD 18-002, ordinance number 5687.
Councilman Colvett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is our applicant present? Let me go ahead and get a name and an address for the record so we can go ahead and move Name and address.
Justin Gillis, 1276 Faxon Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, 38104.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, item number, this is item number 10, case STHD 18-002. Is there any opposition?
Don't have any cards, Mr. Chair.
No cards. No opposition. Mr. Chairman, this case was heard here in committee and did receive a favorable recommendation, and I so-
Hold on one second. We do have some cards. Item number 10? Oh, wow.
Name changer.
I take back my earlier comments. All right. So we have a number of cards. Let me just do a quick tally, Mr. Chair, on those that's in favor of it and those that are in opposition. So far, Mr. Chair, I see the majority wanting to speak in favor. Couple didn't put a specific in favor or not, so I will assume. Okay. All right. I have, I will assume this stack is opposed because they didn't say in favor or opposed. This is our in-favor stack. So what we'll do, we will give each side 10 minutes. So I will call you guys, and I will give you a block of time, 10 minutes total for the in-favor, and then I will give the opposition side the same respect, 10 minutes. So I will call out Cheryl Hazelton, Gordon Alexander, Jennifer Vollmer, John Vollmer, Sam Goff. So as you hear your name, please come up in that order. Just remember, you have 10 minutes to speak, total time, so you can divide it however you like, but please just state your name and address for the record. So Cheryl Hazelton, Gordon Alexander, Jennifer Vollmer, John Vollmer, Sam Goff, so far. Please state your name and address for the record, and your time, time will start ticking.
My name is Cheryl Hazelton. I live at 1267 Faxon Avenue in Speedway Terrace, and I've lived there for 20 years. One of the reasons why we are trying to designate our community as a local historic district is not just about preserving our local historic architecture, but it's also to help preserve our neighborhood and the culture that we have in it. Speedway Terrace is a small neighborhood. We have 347 plots and only 110 acres. Most of our homes date back to the early 1900s. We are using our voice for our community to have a voice in our future, a means to strengthen our area, to curb urban blight, to foster civic beauty and community pride, to stable our property values, and help strengthen the local economy. The positive and lasting effects of a historic district overlay for Speedway Terrace would be a great advantage for our residents as well as the future of Memphis. Your vote a yes would be the best way to help us succeed.
Gordon Alexander, Jennifer Vollmer. Your time is ticking, 10 minutes.
Gordon Alexander, 179 South Rembert Street. I have two slides.
Time is ticking, sir, so if you want somebody else to speak?
I have a couple of slides he's going to put up on the board, but they're prime examples of why Speedway Terrace and a lot of other neighborhoods in Midtown need local historic preservation status. And I'm going to pass these slides around. They're taken of 2295 Oliver and the Cooper Young Neighborhood. They'll give you a before and after of a nice residential home on a treasured lot and what was put there afterwards. This is not just happening in Midtown, it's happening all over the city, where people are coming in, buying one lot, putting two houses on there, and basically, these do not fit the character of the neighborhood. So we in Midtown and all the different neighborhoods and all the representative organizations urge you pass this for our neighborhoods in Midtown and for Speedway Terrace. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Vollmer, John Vollmer, Sam Goff, Paul McIntosh, Robert Hatsfield, in that
Hello. My name is John Vollmer. I've lived at 1354 Tutwiler in Speedway Terrace for 18 years. I grew up in Fort Pickren, 215 West Illinois Street. The neighborhood was adjacent to the Memphis, Arkansas, and Harrah Hen Bridge and the Meadow Museum, which was a hospital in World War II. It was a poor mixed neighborhood, shotgun duplexes, and single-family homes. Growing up in Fort Pickren, we slid down the Indian Mounds. We had our waiting pool with a fountain in the middle where all the neighborhood kids, both black and white, played. In 1960, our neighborhood was razed for the first urban development project in Memphis. Even the streets, except for Illinois, disappeared. It's now historic district called French Park, French Fort. My point is, I'm the last generation who've lived in Fort Pickren. The only remaining memory of this neighborhood that has provided one of the deep roots of this great oak tree called Memphis is the Indian Mounds, the Ornamental Museum, and Harrah Hen Bridge. But the people are tied to the houses that attracted us there, the interconnectivity of homes and the people. Sometimes things in life happen that bring back those root memories of impactful neighborhood people, but I always see the homes when I see the people, the yards we played in, the parlor we visited, the porches where we listened and we talked, a family, and we learned about the neighborhood history. We got whipped when we did things bad, so I have an acute interest in this, as I know what is community, the people, the homes connection, and the long-term impact it has on our citizens and how it defines all of us. The houses in Speedway Terrace also have a rich architectural, common history, and root system, the same as Fort Pickren. All we ask is that we keep that commonality- All we ask is that we keep that commonality, that root, and have a voice in encouraging future development to have similar designs. The homes have been here over 100 years. The current inhabitants will come and will go, but the homes will always keep that same social and economic interest in buying us through this root system we call an oak tree. We, the current inhabitants, and you, our elected officials, have a responsibility to our neighbors, our city, and most importantly, to these root homes, to maintain and preserve them in order to honor the legacy and the history of development of this city. This is who we are. We ask all of you to do the right thing in protecting the rich history of this neighborhood and the city through these homes. We want and encourage development, but thoughtful development, not short-term, self-serving interests of a few. So when we all drive our grandkids and great-grandkids through the neighborhood to show them the houses in the neighborhood where we come from, our roots, we pass on stories and memories that make us what we are and therefore make this city what we are. This strong root system, these homes, is the foundation of this city now and for generations to come. It is where we call Speedway Terrace home, and it is who we are.
Sir, sir, hold on one second. Pause the time, Valerie. I just wanted to make you aware, sir. You took about a lot of the time for the group, so I was just trying to just remind you to allow everybody else to get a chance to speak.
As long as you listen to what I say.
All right. Jennifer Vollmer, Sam Goff, June West, Paul McIntosh, Robert Hatchfield, in that order. Please, go ahead. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Jennifer Vollmer. I live at 1346 Tutweiler. I live in the home directly next door to my dad, who just took up quite a bit of your time. My point is, is we just want to protect the integrity of our neighborhood. I chose to purchase that home right next door to my dad in that neighborhood because Speedway Terrace is such a gem. It truly is. So we're just asking you, please, help us preserve the integrity of our neighborhood.
Thank you. Please, Madam Comptroller.
Sam Goff, 143 Clark Place, President of Evergreen Neighborhood Association. My plea is that you listen to those of us who have been working for years in our neighborhoods to protect them. My plea is that you listen to those of us who know the difference between the Midtown overlay and historic district guidelines. My plea is that you listen to the comments you made yourselves earlier. Speedway Terrace is on the upswing, and we're not willing to take inappropriate development anymore. Thank you. Please vote for Speedway Terrace.
Thank you. June West, Memphis Heritage. I don't think I need to say anymore. Memphis Heritage is supporting the neighborhoods all over the city, not just in Midtown, for their integrity and their support of their neighborhoods. I think you saw it in New Chicago.
What you're seeing is the same thing. It may not seem the same, but it is the same. So please, please, vote in favor of Speedway Terrace. Thank you.
Paul McIntosh, Robert Hatchfield, Alan Hayes, Barbara Suspect.
My name is Paul McIntosh. I live at 1267 Faxon. I've lived in the neighborhood for 20 years, and it's come a long way at that time. It's, and I think we should really do this for our neighborhood. It'd be a really great thing. Thank you.
My name is Robert Hatfield. I live at 2250 Nelson Avenue in Cooper Young. I'm here representing the Cooper Young Community Association, and I just want to express our support for Speedway Terrace. I hope that you see, like we see, that they would benefit greatly from this tool for engagement and participation in the direction and future of their neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Alan Hayes. I live at 1221 Faxon Avenue. I'm a native Miffian of over 60 years and lived in the Speedway Terrace neighborhood for 32 years. My childhood was near a park in Getwell, but when I came financially able, I invested in a home in the 80s in Midtown. I love the older homes, appreciate their quality workmanship, the materials used, unique craftsman architecture. With the recent renovation and completion of the crosstown concourse, many properties in the Speedway Terrace neighborhood have changed ownership and have either already been renovated or in the process of renovation. It's an exciting time for our neighborhood, but it's also a time to protect our historical homes and neighborhoods' value. There are those who do not understand or choose to ignore the historical essence of Memphis' historical neighborhoods, and their application for the Landmarks Commission's overlay is an effort to protect Speedway Terrace for unwelcome and detrimental development. It is the neighborhoods and the city's best interest to assure these properties maintain the character and historical architecture of what currently exists, and with your approval of our historical overlay application, will help keep Speedway Terrace unique to its original style and appearance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Sizak, from Central Gardens and Central Gardens Association, Chairperson of the Landmarks Committee. It's working for Central Gardens. It has for years, and we want to support all of our neighbors that want to move forward with the historic designation. Thank you.
Paul McIntosh, Justin Gillis, Cheryl Forbes. I don't know if you're for or against. Does it state? 27 seconds.
Justin Gillis, 1276 Faxon Avenue, Speedway resident for 15 years and president of the crosstown Memphis CDC. We are applicants for this and fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you. 18 seconds, last comment.
My comments were for this development. To those of us who have chosen...
Name and address, please, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cheryl Forbes, 1362 North Parkway, 30104. For those of us who have chosen, invested, and have worked to make this a safe community, we request your yes vote to the local historic overlay for Speedway Terrace. We have been on the National Historic Registry since 1999, and it is our desire to keep the integrity of our standing on that registry. Thank you.
Thank you. I did have a couple more cards. I do apologize, ran out of time. But Bob Riggs, were you for or against, sir? Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Ingram, were you for or against?
For.
For? Thank you, ma'am. All right. Put you guys in my four pile. I have Kelvin, is it Colum? Colum? Okay, you're four, sir. All right, I got you. Okay, so have you in my four. So I don't have any opposition, Mr. Chair, so I have all fours, and we have completed those cards.
That's her. I move it to the floor.
Okay. It's been moved by you, Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilwoman Swearengen. And I do have a quick comment. This item is in District 7. It's also in Super District 8. I just wanted to say that I am in favor of this item based upon Councilman Conrad's work. He is right now in the process of working towards improving the UDC. So adding some language there that can create a way that we can avoid demolitions just happening, and so I do appreciate your support of this item. Councilman Conrad, you're recognized.
Thanks, Chairman Boyd. I want to just thank all the folks from Speedway Terrace who've been working so hard. We had a good meeting this morning and on everything that's going on. So I also plan to vote for this, and as I explained to the folks, we'll also then hold the minutes until June 5th, when hopefully the overlay ordinance is complete. We had a meeting yesterday with Neil Prosser and Mr. Zine and Mr. Whitehead, and made a lot of progress on three of the issues, so I remain confident that we'll update the ordinance that governs landmarks in these historic districts. And I just ask everybody to be patient and bear with us on that. I was going to say one other thing, and I forgot what it was. So we're going to be having a meeting soon as well, so we're working on the redraft of the ordinance. It was, hopefully it'll pass on first reading today and be on path for June 5th. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Conrad. Councilwoman Fully Love, you're recognized.
Yes. I would just like to ask the question, if anybody could answer it for me. How many homes in that area are historic? And how many, how many houses do you think there are within that neighborhood?
Councilwoman Fully Love, we have 347 homes in our neighborhood. We have 26 vacant lots, and the majority of the homes, I want to say there are about 52 that are non-conforming.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Fully Love. Councilman Conrad.
Just one kind of point of information, just one of the things that came out of the meeting today, and this is kind of where the, I think, the devil's in the details on some of this. One of the things that I heard loud and clear, you know, from my colleagues at the last meeting was having some notice provision, and hopefully we'll reach consensus on what percent of the people in a area, you know, would sign a petition and agree. But in this specific area where there are about 340 or so homes, 2/3 of them are owned by mostly out-of-town rental companies or investment companies that rent. And as I understand it from a meeting with the team today, the largest block of homes owned by any one company is nine. So when we start talking about notice provisions and how many, you know, signatures on a petition we get, that's one of the kind of intricacies that we're working through, is that it's really not fair, in my view, to penalize a neighborhood if 65% of the people or the owners are out of town. So should it be based on that? Should the population just be people that are living in the houses or owners of the houses? So those are the kind of things that we're working through as we flush this out. But that's just an interesting difference from this neighborhood that we're kind of working through, so, which is different than I think than Cooper Young. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Conrad. Seeing no other members in the queue, council members, please cast your votes for item number 10.
Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hetchpeth, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call our fiscal consent.
Item number 43 is a resolution accepting and appropriating funds from the state of Tennessee for 2017 fire in-service training in the amount of $775,800. This resolution is sponsored by Fire Services. Item number 44 is a resolution accepting one MPD RTCC camera compatible with existing MPD equipment to be installed at 3250 Gurne Street at the request of the Memphis Capital Investment Group, LLC, who gave the necessary funds. The item is being donated by the Memphis Shelby County Law Enforcement Foundation. The cumulative total donation is $6,380. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services. Item number 45 is a resolution accepting two MPD RTCC cameras compatible with existing MPD equipment to be installed at the interest of Burbank Road, at the interest of Hungerford Road, at the request of Jordan Aluminum Company, who gave the necessary funds. The items are being donated by the Memphis Shelby County Law Enforcement Foundation. The cumulative total donation is $12,760. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services. Item number 46, resolution accepting three MPD RTCC cameras compatible with existing MPD equipment to be installed in the Shady Grove-Gwen Colonial Neighborhood at the request of the residents of Shady Grove-Gwen Colonial Neighborhood, who gave the necessary funds. The items are being donated by the Memphis Shelby County Law Enforcement Foundation. The cumulative total donation is $23,800. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services. Item number 47, resolution accepting and appropriating grant funds in the amount of $4,400 from Junior League of Memphis to install an outside waterspout at the Lester Community Center. This resolution is sponsored by Parks and Neighborhoods Division. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our fiscal consent agenda items.
All right. Thank you, Madam Comptroller. The item's been moved by Councilman Hatchpeth, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for our fiscal consent agenda.
Fully Love, yes. Hetchpeth, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 48.
Item number 48 is a resolution seeking approval to authorize repurposing of a portion of the Sea Isle Park into a dog park. Authorize and accept improvements to the site to be performed by the Sea Isle Park Neighborhood Association and authorize sponsorship and branding recognition to Hollywood Feed, LLC, for their financial support of the improvements. Hollywood Feed is donating $59,718.99 to the Sea Isle Neighborhood to fund the dog park. No city funds will be used. This resolution is sponsored by Parks and Neighborhood Division.
Councilwoman Swearengen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item was discussed within the Parks and Environmental Committee. Approval was recommended, and I so move, and let's please note that same night minutes was requested.
Okay. This item been moved by Councilwoman Swearengen, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Let's see, I do have a card on this item. John Benke, please come up, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, my name is John Benke, 1164 Brookfield, 38119. Mr. Chairman, I'm First Vice President of the Sea Isle Park Neighborhood Association, and we celebrate our 40th anniversary next year. Just wanted to tell the council that there's wide enthusiastic support for the dog park at Sea Isle Park, and mainly just wanted to give two thank yous or three thank yous. Number one to Director Maria Blanco at the Division of Parks and Services, who gave us excellent direction and advice. Councilmen Colvet and Morgan for their support, and above all, to Hollywood Feed. Without their financial support, this would not be possible. So we very much appreciate your consideration for this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right. That's the only card I have. Councilman Morgan, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take this time as well and let my colleagues know and the members of the audience know, and just also thank Mr. Benke and Mr. Lovett, who's in the audience. This is an incredible example of, you know, citizens who are engaged in their park, engaged in their community, and looking for something that can improve the lives of their neighbors, thinking outside the box, coming together and working, working, working to see it to the end, and so raising the money into what I think is ultimately going to be a higher and better use of this parkland for people around and improving the quality of lives of your neighborhood and community. Thank you so much. This is a wonderful example of engagement, and we couldn't do it without you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Seeing no other council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number 48.
Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hetchpeth, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please note that same night minutes, June. Thank you. Please call item number 49.
Item number 49 is a resolution authorizing and funding improvements at the Liberty Bowl Memorial Stadium. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Hetchpeth.
Councilman Hatchpeth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee, Matt recommends approval, and I so move.
It's been moved electronically, please.
It's been moved by Councilman HetchPeth, seconded by Councilman Ford. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number 49.
Colvett, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. HetchPeth, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. And that is a request for same night minutes as well. All right. And Madam Comptroller, we did do item number 50, which was a unanimous voice vote.
Yes, sir.
For the youth council, so please show that as well. All right. Please go to our consent agenda.
Item number 11 on our consent agenda is an ordinance fixing the tax rate of the city of Memphis for fiscal year 2019. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5689 is sponsored by the Finance Division. Item number 12 is an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the tax levy on the assessed values on all properties of every species within the city limits for general purposes for the fiscal year July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5690 is sponsored by the Finance Division. Item number 13, referendum ordinance amending the charter of the city of Memphis, same being Chapter 11 of the Acts of 1879, as amended pursuant to the provisions of Article 11, Section 9 of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee Home Rule Amendment, so as to provide for the approval of contracts by the city council and to submit the proposed ordinance to the qualified voters of the city of Memphis at the first general state election to be held November 6, 2018. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5691 is sponsored by Councilman Jones. Item number 14 is an ordinance amending Title 14, Chapter 14-24, creating a Section 14-241 of the City of Memphis Code of Ordinances, so as to require city council initiation of any new historic overlay districts, regulate which matters are reviewed by the Memphis Landmark Commission, and establish historic districts, and address potential conflicts between historic zoning regulations and other land use regulations in established historic overlay districts. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5692 is sponsored by Councilman Conrad. Item number 15 is up for second reading. This ordinance is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. It's case number ZTA 18-001, ordinance number 5688. Item number 16 is a resolution accepting Charleston HL Apartment Community, LLC, and authorizing release of bond contract number CR 5226. Item number 17 is a resolution approving final plan of Highland Row Plan Development Phase 2, Area B. Our number 18 has been withdrawn, and that concludes our consent agenda items, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. It's been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilwoman Swearengen. Seeing no other council members in the queue, please cast your votes for our consent agenda.
Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. HetchPeth, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call MLGW fiscal consent. Item number 19.
Item number 19 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Ford of Murfreesboro for the purchase of mid- and full-size sedans in the amount of $242,586.50. Item number 20 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Ford of Murfreesboro for the purchase of light-duty passenger and cargo vans in the amount of $146,537. Item number 21 is a resolution awarding contract number 12036, Train-Chiller-Rnuel Service Agreement, number 2, to Train U.S. Incorporated Doing Business as Train in the funded amount of $130,804. Item number 22 is a resolution awarding contract number 12023, Aerial Patrol of Gas Transmission Right-of-Way to Tennessee Helicopter Services, Inc., in the funded amount of $106,800. Item number 23, resolution approving contract number 11986 between Memphis Light Gas and Water Division and Trunk Line Gas Company, LLC, in the approximate amount of $210,000. Item number 24, resolution awarding contract number 12027, Voice PBX Systems Network Maintenance to Black Box Network Services, Inc., in the funded amount of $1,107,024.75. Item number 25 is a resolution approving change number 4 to contract number 11634, Substation Engineering Grounding with Mesa Associated, Inc., in the funded amount of $75,000, based on agreed-upon rates with no increase in rates from the previous renewal. Item number 26, resolution awarding contract number 12032, MLGW Electronic Bill and Presentment to Fidelity Information Services, LLC, in the funded amount of $3,600,000. Item number 27, resolution approving change number 4 to contract number 11669, Property and Boiler Insurance with Factory Mutual Insurance Company, in the funded amount of Item number 28, resolution approving change number 2 to contract number 11873, Professional Locksmith Services with Quality Safe and Lock Company, Inc., based on agreed-upon rates in the funded amount of $50,000. Item number 29, resolution awarding a contract to Mythix, Inc., for the Oracle Unlimited License Agreement and HR Analytics in the amount of $3,770,886.96. Item number 30 is a resolution approving change number 11 to contract number 9547, IBM Maintenance with International Business Machines, IBM, in the funded amount of $255,857.61. And item number 31 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Scruggs Equipment Company in the amount of $84,800, and Utility Equipment Service, Inc., in the amount of $124,657 for the purchase of two-ton steel utility service bodies. And item number 32, resolution awarding a purchase order to Scruggs Equipment Company for the purchase of hydraulic front-mounted truck winches in the amount of $131,256. And please note that item number 31 and 32 are requesting same night minutes. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our MLGW fiscal consent items.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller.
My pleasure.
This item was moved by Councilwoman Robinson, and it was seconded by Councilman Morrison.
Let's do it again.
Our computer system's been really sticking today, and you press the button, it won't recognize us, and our mics are going in and out. I will say, I'm literally tired of repeating myself on these mics in this system. However, you know, it is what it is. Can we get it back in the system, Madam Comptroller?
I'll try manually, sir. It's moved on.
All right. Don't worry about it. Ms. Robinson, will you try to move it again?
I see it, sir. Moved by Robinson and Morrison.
Yeah, they just had to press it again. Thank you. So this item's been moved by Councilwoman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Morrison. Now, I'm in the queue. Go back, go back.
Okay, go back.
Yes, because I have a question.
One moment, sir.
So my question is to Mr. Jeans or Mr. Young on items 19 and 20 again. I think I asked you guys this the last time. Do we not sell Ford trucks in Memphis? We're spending over $600,000 of ratepayers' money, and we are going to Murfreesboro with a great, strong economy. We don't, I know we probably sell some full-size sedans, cargo vans, somewhere in Memphis.
Yes, sir. Well, certainly our preference is to buy locally, and we've had some difficulty in getting participation from local dealers. In the case when we get no bids from local dealers, then we move to the state contract, but it is not our first choice. We have been working and contacting local dealers and encouraging them to bid on our ongoing bids when we have vehicles, so we hope to be able to change this trend and indeed buy from local dealers.
Thank you, sir. So the Memphis Ford dealerships must be doing mighty well to turn down city business or MLGW's business, but thank you. That's satisfactory. I was just curious, it's over $600,000 that's going to Murfreesboro's economy and not Memphis, so.
Understand. We would like to reverse that ourselves.
Thank you, sir. All right. Seeing no members in the queue, no more members in the queue for this MLGW fiscal consent. Please cast your votes.
Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. HetchPeth, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Fully Love, yes. Swearengen, no. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Oh, is it? Okay. All right. Please correct the record, and please show Councilwoman Swearengen voting yes.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
All right. We may have to go back to pad and pen because technology is failing us in this council chamber. I'm gonna go back and listen to the tape, see how many times I say microphone granicus. Madam Comptroller, please call item number 33.
Item number 33 on our regular agenda is an appointment to the Health Educational and Housing Facility Board, Brittany Rowe.
Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I shall move.
It's been moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman?
Morrison.
Morrison, thank you. Council members, please cast your votes for item number 33.
Colvett, yes. Fully Love, yes. Ford, yes. HetchPeth, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 34.
Item number 34 is a resolution approving the FY19 budget for the Downtown Memphis Commission and affirming the Central Business Improvement District assessment rate of 0.65 per $100 of assessed value, no change. This resolution is sponsored by Downtown Memphis Commission. It was held from April 24th.
Councilman Ford.
Mr. Chair, two weeks ago, the committee met and considered this item. It was given approval downstairs. We had some questions, comments, and concerns, which put this item back into committee today, so it's in front of the council. I'd like to go ahead and move it on the floor.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilman Morrison.
I got that already.
I do have a few questions on here, and I do see Ms. Oswald present. If we go over to our variances, one thing that I was curious about, Ms. Oswald, was could you give me a proper explanation on the 17% increase in the overall uses? I shared with you some of the concerns that individuals within the C-bid areas that feel like they are not basically getting anything for their fee assessed value that they're paying. Can you give me an explanation as to what this $489,200 extra will be used for? I'm on this slide, just in case. Sure. Okay, hold on. Your mic should be on.
It's on now. Okay, thank you. Jennifer Oswald, President Downtown Memphis Commission. I know you've seen me before here, and you've hopefully received this information before, but I do thank you for allowing me to address a few of your questions again today. Our assessment has not changed since it was created in 1997 at 65 cents per $100 assessed. It does fluctuate with the assessed value of property, commercial property only, so it's not residential or nonprofit or governmental property, but it's commercial only in downtown in the Central Business Improvement District. So this 17% does represent an increase over the pre-assessment year, which was this current year. And we try our best to spend that money to the direct benefit of our tax, our assessment payers, but also all of their constituents, which would be their, the residents in their apartment unit, you know, the visitors to their museum, and we try to talk to them frequently about how we should use that money. And the most frequent things we get are Blue Sway Brigade, which is hospitality and safety combined, more officers, more time on the street, more hours of the day, so now they're there seven days a week. They're there till midnight on weekends. The other thing is clean and green, so clean downtown. We invested this year in partnering with the Hospitality Hub to put people experiencing homelessness to work to clean downtown Memphis, and so that has a dual benefit of helping them reach services as well as clean our downtown. So those are the two biggest items, but I also want you to know that our staff not only oversees these activities, but also all the incentives that we are able to help attract business to downtown. So any redevelopment of property, those incentives, while they go through a different board, they are our same staff. So we feel we're a very efficient operation to supplement city activities, you know, the Main Street Mall maintenance, as well as this Blue Sway Brigade, that would have to fall to the city's budget for police, for general services on all of those items. So we supplement that. We take our responsibility very seriously. And right now, our area has expanded with activities. So you have the Tennessee Brewery and Art Space Apartments in South Memphis, which have recently added around 300-plus new apartments, so that's more people for us to serve. And so this increase will allow us to keep the same level of service for all the new people that are downtown. We have 1,500 new employees working downtown in the first quarter of 2018, so that Service Master, Wonderlic Securities just moved in. We have several other smaller companies and a few more to come very soon. So we need to be able to provide programming for them, yoga in the park and other, you know, food truck Thursdays, keeping it a vibrant place that people want to work in, want to live in, and that's our responsibility. So while it is an increase, we believe that our service area has increased. There's more activity in the medical district. We've expanded our Blue Sway Brigade into the medical district and hope to be able to do that with these anticipated increased funds. If not, if our budget were to remain static, we would have to reduce that activity. We're always open to hearing from our payers on where they would like us to spend this money. And over the last couple of months, we started gathering stakeholder meetings of different groups of our stakeholders and our C-bid assessment payers to see what is it that we could do to better serve them. And so I hope that as a result of those meetings, we'll hear more activity, and we're always open to adjusting as well. So as more activity happens in the north of our C-bid, we will adjust our routes of Blue Sway Brigade to the north.
Okay. So I'm looking at office expenses under the line of variances. You have $76,514. What does that number consist of? That's a 35%. That's a 35% increase?
Yes, there's a detail, I think, two pages back of all the office expense. It is primarily related to the Blue Sway Brigade increase, which is 65% of our salary increase, and it's adding nine people. And this primarily, the biggest expense is the workers' compensation and liability insurance that comes along with that service because they do detain people from time to time until the police can get there. They do ride bikes and segways. So our insurance cost is higher for that population of our employees, as well as some equipment and the radios they use, helmets, all those types of things are in office expense. The next item unrelated to Blue Sway Brigade is some further data that we're collecting on commercial real estate, as well as monitoring the social media of all of our partners. We try to promote all of our downtown businesses and activities across the greater city.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I am done with my questions. Councilman Ford. Okay, Councilman Ford, you have one. You're recognized, sir.
I got one more question on the income. Number 4,300 operations income that increased, I, I should have asked it downstairs this morning. I know that this is the largest variance of an increase of 267%. It going from $6,000 to $22,000. How much of that is the C-bid portion of this income item?
So that particular line item is unrelated to the C-bid. That is a fee we charge for when people request a permit to play music, or actually to sell goods on Main Street Mall. And this year, we actually began charging the food trucks for being in Court Square on Food Truck Thursday. And the reason for that is because we invested $15,000 to install electric hookup for those food trucks so they don't have to use their generator and that it'll be acquired or parked on Food Truck Thursday. We're actually increasing the capacity on that this year.
That's your justification for the increase?
I'm sorry?
That's your justification for the increase?
Well, the increase is based on the food trucks paying on every Thursday. That's just what the number comes out to. But we will invest our money in the electric hookup regardless if they show up, you know, at that same rate.
Last question, where, where would the C-bid be, just for clarification?
What, what would the C-bid be?
C-bid, yeah, where would it be located here?
It is in 4,000, the first line item.
The first one, okay.
Yes.
This is the one where that money is gonna be used for admin, oh, okay, no, we're good. All right, thank you.
The biggest item is the, the Blue Sway Brigade increase, but also some additional capacity on development to help pre-development costs with smaller and minority developers. So we will help them with the design assistance, as well as feasibility analysis on a project until we've got some capacity there.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Morgan, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just over the last, I believe, few months in the discussions and meetings that I've had with Ms. Oswald and the questions that I've heard from the committee and from council members, I just want to thank her for the work. I think this has been a completely different tone than we've had in the, in the past few years in working with the Downtown Memphis Commission to get answers and to be really on top of it in terms of responsiveness and exchange of questions and answers with council members, email or meetings and the availability that you've taken. So thank you so much for your approach this year and appreciate your work.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Again, thank you, Ms. Oswald, for answering my questions and sharing the information with me that I requested, and satisfactory to me. Councilmembers, seeing no other council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number 34.
Brown, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
Please show Councilman Morrison voting yes as well.
Councilman Morrison, yes. Thank you, sir.
That item passes.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. Please call item number 35.
Item number 35 is a resolution allocating and appropriating $218,624 from the cover line FS-18100 to fire station repair, FY18 Generator retrofit, FS-18101 for repairs at Fire Station 7 at 1017 Jefferson Avenue, Fire Station 33 at 2555 Winchester, Fire Station 36 at 3215 South Third Street, and Fire Station 52 at 6675 Winchester Road. Funding for this project is part of the FY18 Capital Improvement Budget funded by GeoBonds General. This resolution is sponsored by Fire Services.
Councilwoman Swearengen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item was discussed within the Public Safety and Homeland Security Committee. Approval was recommended and ISO move.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Swearengen, seconded by Councilman Ford. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number 35.
Brown, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedgepath, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 36.
Item number 36 is a resolution allocating and appropriating $155,989 from the cover line FS-18100 to fire station repair, FY18 Fire Station Improvements, FS-18105 for repairs at Fire Station 13 at 333 East Parkway, Fire Station 16 at 2201 Lamar Avenue, Fire Station 35 at 3505 South Mendenhall Road, and minor exterior improvements to fire prevention at 2668 Avery Avenue. Funding for this project is part of the FY18 Capital Improvement Budget funded by GeoBonds General. This resolution is sponsored by Fire Services.
Councilwoman Swearengen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After discussing this item in the Public Safety and Homeland Security Committee, recommendation was favorable, ISO move.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Swearengen, seconded by Councilman Ford. Seeing no council members in the queue, cast your votes for 36.
Brown, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 37.
Item number 37 is a resolution approving a lease agreement with Memphis Industrial Scrap Recycling LLC as approved by the Board of Commissioners of the Memphis and Shelby County Port Commission on February 21st, 2018. The annual amount of the lease is $104,543.2. This resolution is sponsored by Memphis and Shelby County Port Commission. The contract number is CR-5272.
Councilman Hedgepath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval and ISO move.
It's been moved by Councilman Hedgepath, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for 37.
Brown, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Hedgepath, yes. Jones, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Councilwoman Fully Love, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 38.
Item number 38 is a resolution appropriating and allocating the amount of $786,345 for the installation of ADA curb ramps as part of curb ramp group 55. This resolution is sponsored by the Public Works Division.
Councilman Hedgepath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval and ISO move.
It's been moved by Councilman Hedgepath, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Seeing no council members in the queue, cast your votes for item number 38.
Brown, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedgepath, yes. Jones, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 39.
Item number 39 is a resolution appropriating and allocating the amount of $786,345 for the installation of ADA curb ramps as part of curb ramp group 56. This resolution is sponsored by the Public Works Division.
Councilman Hedgepath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval and ISO move.
It's been moved, can you move it electronically? It's been moved by Councilman Hedgepath, seconded by Councilman Morrison. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number 39.
Brown, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedgepath, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passed. Please call item number 40.
Item number 40 is a resolution awarding the construction contract in the amount of $5,979,442 for STP repaving group five, project number PW01254. This resolution is sponsored by the Public Works Division.
Councilman Hedgepath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval and ISO move.
It's been moved by Councilman Hedgepath, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Seeing no council members in the queue, cast your votes for item number 40.
Brown, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedgepath, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 41.
Item number 41 is a resolution requesting the mayor and city council to permit MATA to operate a new bus route, providing service from downtown Memphis to Shelby Farms Park and enter into an inter-local agreement with Shelby County Government to provide funding for the service. This resolution is sponsored by MATA.
Councilman Hedgepath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval and ISO move.
It's been moved by Councilman Hedgepath, seconded by Councilman Swearengen. Seeing no one in the queue, please cast your votes for item number 41.
Brown, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Hedgepath, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 42.
Item number 42 is a resolution accepting, allocating, and appropriating additional grant funds in the amount of $77,996 from TDOT for Elvis Presley Boulevard, project number PW01064. There is a $19,499 local match, which has previously been allocated to this project. This resolution is sponsored by the Public Works Division.
Councilman Hedgepath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval and ISO move.
It's been moved by Councilman Hedgepath, seconded by Councilman Ford. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number 42.
Brown, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedgepath, yes. Jones, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
Item passes. All right. Let's go to our same night minutes. Councilman Ford.
Chairman, reading the same night minutes, I find them in order, only find one modification. On page 4572, Colvette does not have two Es. Let's make sure there has one. And there's one, yeah, yeah. There was a second one, hold on.
Councilman Colviet.
Yes. It's item number 48. Right? Everything else is in order, counsel, colleagues. So I'd like to go ahead and move the adoption of the same night minutes.
All right. It's been moved by-
Item 48, take the E off of Colvette at the end. Oh, sorry. The minutes of items 31, 32, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, and 49 of the regular meeting the City Council, City of Memphis made 2018 is found completely in order, save one correction. So I'd like to move it as amended.
All right. It's been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilman Morrison. Please cast your votes for our same night minutes, special item number one as amended. Councilman Colviet, are you voting?
Colviet.
Colviet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedgepath, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Brown, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. All right. We have a modification to our council agenda. Last council meeting, we had MATA here and we were requesting information and I was under the impression that the information would be provided to the council members, but individually, but Mr. Rosenfeld brought a presentation. So you can go ahead and present your presentation. Hopefully it's not a long presentation to give us and provide us with some pertinent information as we request it, as it pertains to our paratransit patrons for MATA. So how long you think you need, Mr. Rosenfeld? Talking my language, sir. Thank you. Do you need anything on the projector or are you passing out?
I think it'd just be easier to go right off the handout because I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We've been having technology issues all day.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to be before you, Gary Rosenfeld, Chief Executive Officer of Memphis Transit Authority. As a product of some dialogue with our constituency and the MATA Board, we're putting together a regular reporting process to report on the status of MATA Plus, which is the ADA paratransit service that, that works in conjunction with the fixed route service in Memphis. Starting earlier this year, we experienced some problems with some staffing issues on the driver's side and also in the call center, which created some other issues within the operations in terms of policy adherence and also rules and regulations issues. So in February, a group of, of our customers or, or clients came to the MATA Board and, and were concerned about the length of time that the trips were taking for people to, to get from point A to point B on MATA Plus. We made some adjustments, which had some trickle-down effect on the number of trips that became available for people to use. So that was the start of the process. So we've had this dialogue going on and we've come to the conclusion that we need to report regularly to this body, as well as to the MATA Board, on the status of MATA Plus. So we just want to go on page two. You know, MATA is committed to the 7,183 certified customers with a high-quality passenger experience. We take our responsibly, responsibility seriously and recognize the need to constantly set goals that stretch our abilities. MATA Plus suffers from the same financial constraints that MATA does. It's been underfunded for each of the last 20 years, or MATA has been underfunded for each of the last 20 years by at least $20 million. Specifically to the MATA Plus program, a shortage of 10 bus operators, shortage in the industry of qualified commercial bus operators. It's really bad, especially when you're facing a 3.9% national unemployment rate. Since then- Since then, uh, since, uh, the last, uh, meeting here, we have interviewed and selected thirteen candidates to begin training to support the MATA Plus operations. On the next page, you'll see the MATA Plus ADA certification. We're looking at some possibility of changing the fare structure for MATA Plus certified people that use the fixed route system. We were concerned about our ability to absorb the additional certification that we felt we would get. Um, we did see a big, uh, a twenty-five percent increase in the number of applications. The good news is we're keeping up with those applications and it's, there's no stress on that part of the system. We have committed to, um, there was an issue with the voicemail system, um, on the reservations line, and as we went through this process, we uncovered a, a number of issues. We've, we uncovered the fact that some people had figured out how to get around the, the reservation system itself. So now they're making reservations through other channels and not, and they're, uh, able to take advantage that, of that flaw. We're tightening that up, which is making, uh, which is difficult for people to accept, but nonetheless, the rules are the rules and we expect everybody to follow them. We've committed to a goal of returning phone calls when people leave a message, uh, for our reservations office, of, uh, returning those calls within an hour or less. The goal is ninety percent of the time. You'll see on the graph that, uh, there were a couple of days that we fell below that area over the last few weeks, but we, just like, uh, we've been having here this afternoon, we've had some system problems that's contributed to that. On the following page, you'll see the number of calls and the number of messages. Um, for example, on May sixth, a total of two messages were left on the reservation system the entire day. So naturally, we made the, we, we made that goal. But, uh, the highest, uh, it looks like a hundred and thirty-three, uh, on April thirtieth, we had some serious system troubles those days, and the lowest being two. But we are hitting those targets on a fairly regular basis, and we'll be monitoring that. I draw your attention to MATA Plus total calls received. And if you look at the beginning, uh, uh, we started twelve-thirty-one or the beginning of this calendar year, um, the first week of the year in January, we were ru- running about two-hundred-and-seventy calls, maybe to three-eighty, uh, a, a day. As you get down towards the beginning of March, we start to see a growth pattern where now all of the sudden, we're taking nine-hundred calls a day. Yeah, uh, Councilman, I made the same, uh, with my eyes when I saw that number. Uh, but then we get to twelve-hundred calls and twelve-hundred-and-fifty-five calls. Something was amiss in the system. The system was being stressed. And, uh, but the good news on that is, is that we've re-imaged the system with new rules and new, uh, new phone tree and, uh, uh, the ability to keep all of the calls in queue rather than having them escape the queue. And then if you look down, starting in April again, we're back down to three-hundred-and-forty calls, two-hundred-and-seventy calls, and the call center numbers are back to where they were at the beginning of the year. On the following page, you'll see hang-up calls, and that, that, those trends follow the same thing. The hang-ups were twenty-two to thirty calls a day before, grew to two-hundred, almost three-hundred calls a day during those high-peak times. And the hang-up calls include messages that are left for us. And if you, our system is set up to take a four-minute message, and the hang-up calls were four minutes of dead air. Well, we still have to listen to the whole thing, and if we have two-hundred calls of dead air, that's eight-hundred minutes. That's almost two full-time people that are pulled away from answering calls to listen to messages that don't really exist. The good news is we're back down to a, a manageable number of messages, uh, in the teens, or on the case of Sunday, uh, uh, May sixth, only five. Call wait times are in line with expectations. In our dispatch office, we take, uh, between se- uh, six thousand and nine thousand calls a month, and we have a call wait time, uh, hold time of between forty seconds and, and seventy seconds. Our reservations call time, again, you'll see the big jump there in March, uh, and April, uh, but the good news is, is that the average call wait time did not go up drastically. The better news is that the average call duration has dropped considerably, recognizing that we do have a full staff, they are fully trained, and they're fully engaged. We can skip through the on-time performance. The on-time performance is still strong and solid. Couple of examples of, uh, some additional communication that we've got going on with the MATA Plus customers. Um, MATA Plus moving forward, we, we are, uh, looking at free fixed route service for MATA Plus certified customers, uh, but we're stuck in some, some policy development on that. We also are working with the FTA Office of EEOC Compliance to make sure that we're not, uh, solving one problem and creating two or three others. We have up to forty new vehicles that will begin, uh, being put into service, uh, in June and deliveries through the summer and early fall. And we are, uh, engaging the client, the, the, uh, vendor that did our recent, uh, net promoter score survey on the fixed route service to develop the same type of a survey for the MATA Plus customers, and that'll be happening sometime in the next ninety days. Uh, we're also looking at enhancing our policies to allow for same-day service for MATA Plus customers and, uh, several different software upgrades because, uh, we need, we need that in order to be able to do all these other things. The MATA Plus reservations line was tested this afternoon at three-fifteen. From this room, I called the reservation office and was, uh, speaking to a reservationist twenty-seven seconds after I placed the call. Um, and, uh, that's, that's a pretty good rate. And three-fifteen is a key pivotable time of day because the reservations office closes at four o'clock in the afternoon for next day. Happy to take your questions.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Rosenfeld. Uh, let me see, I don't have any council members in the queue for questions. Uh, well, I spoke too soon. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. Um, one of my questions was already asked. That was gonna be, are there any efforts to, uh, develop an online reservation or a, a way for them to do it using an app, for instance? But I see in the notes, that's something that's already in development.
Yes, sir.
But can you explain again, I may have just walked back in, uh, or what can account for, I'm looking at the total calls received. Any idea of what caused that spike when we went over three-hundred, up to about seven, uh, at one point, almost eight-hundred?
Um, we have a pretty good idea what it is, sir, but it, it, it's not definitive. So I, I would be remiss to, to, you know, discuss that publicly until I knew for sure. But it's a trend that we watched occur, and the, the trend fell back to normal. So at, at this point, we, we recognize that we are in a normal state and we need to, we need to take the necessary steps to stay there, which means keeping the staffing at full levels, which means returning the phone calls within a reasonable period of time, and, and enhancing the communication with our customers as they, as they call us.
Okay, and, and so what, what assurances do we have that we won't see a spike like that again?
Well, I think that as we, uh, keep the staffing in the, in the appropriate levels, that'll be the first thing, because that's one of the driving factors that, that led to bad communications with our customer groups, uh, before. The next is the upgrade of our telephone system that will not allow people to escape the, um, queue system for reservations and, and also to escape the recording system so that we can get our, our passengers', uh, reservations on tape. So, uh, as we, as we fix those issues and fix those little nuances that we found that was going on, we'll, we'll be able to monitor those things a little bit better.
So you're saying it was, was it a personnel issue that largely accounted for that spike?
Uh, uh, lack of personnel, yeah.
Lack of personnel, okay. Um, do we have an anticipated date? It, it does, you do list here, reviewing the software upgrade, which will allow our customers the option of scheduling their services directly online on a same day. Do we have an, uh, estimated time of implementation for that?
Well, sir, we have to have, I, I, I just spent the weekend at an American Public Transit Association conference specifically for paratransit and bus service, and, um, I engaged some of my industry colleagues on, on bringing that live, especially the software house that provides our software right now. And it's a little bit more complex than what we originally thought, but we have to engineer it in such a way that we're in compliance with all the rules, ADA rules and regulations. And then we also have to make sure that we're not putting any of our funding agreements in, in, uh, jeopardy by breaking, you know, some esoteric rule or, or some other point. So the, the due diligence is gonna take a little longer, but we, we're, it's our top priority.
Okay, and then you also mentioned that you're looking at an upgrade of the telephone system. Is that in the works now? Is there an estimated time of completion for that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear-
The, you mentioned something about upgrade of your telephone systems?
Yeah, that's, that's stuff that we're doing right now with our phone system.
With the existing?
With the existing equipment, just changes in programming and features and options that become available to our, to our folks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilwoman Swerengen, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I noticed, uh, Mr. Rosenfeld, that you are making, uh, necessary improvements regarding the hang-up calls, but after attending the board meeting the other day and listening to the constituents, the meeting prior, many are having problems withholding with someone to assist them over forty minutes per call. And they are sharing that's one of the contributing factors on some hang-ups. Perhaps you're speaking of the hang-ups when, uh, they aren't speaking with anyone, but they are having to wait an excessive period of time in order to receive some personal attention. How are you addressing that? Um, MATA pickup is extraordinarily late. They're tardy, and they're missing their appointments. That's another concern that they're having. You have shared within your data that, well, since April the eleventh, it has been your, your goal to return calls within an hour. Well, I attended your board meeting on April twenty-sixth, and they have called since April eleventh, and on the twenty-sixth, their calls still have not been returned, and that was two to three weeks later. So there's still a lot of glitches that are in need of being corrected, and, uh, and also would like for you to address the issue regarding the main terminal. Many of them stood up and shared that there have been shootings at the main terminal, there have been fights breaking out in the main terminal, and on the external portion of that terminal, there are no, there's no security. All the security guards are in, on the inside of the terminal rather than addressing all of the chaos that's transpiring on the outside of the terminal.
Yes, ma'am. Last week, I met with, um, Director Rollings and, uh, the Shelby County Schools, uh, Shelby County Schools, uh, uh, Security Services, and, uh, we, we met and discussed the issues at the Hudson Transit Terminal. We're gonna make some changes to the, 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 uh, fixed route that goes by one of the schools that was contributing to that, those particular incidents to enable the Shelby County Schools' security to monitor their boarding and monitor their, their trip to Hudson. Uh, we discussed with, uh, Director Rollings the opportunity to hire off-duty, um, police officers to en- enhance our security services, and we drew up a plan to have them on the outside and also onboard some of our buses to have a strong, um, secure presence onboard so that hopefully we can avoid these issues in the, in the future. And we anticipate this enhanced, um, approach to this to go on through, uh, to be in place and go on through, uh, the remainder of this school year, and then we'll, we'll be keeping a close eye on it for, for, uh, the future.
Council members, one, one second, Councilwoman Swerengen. Just FYI, I do not have a quorum. So, I, I do, I, I do not have a quorum. So, um, well, we can, we can hear the presentation, we cannot conduct business, can't vote on anything because we don't have a quorum. So think about that, uh, when we wanna leave, um, it puts us in a very vicarious position. So I just wanna make note to this point, all we can do is listen. If we can find two more, we're good, so. All right, s- sorry, Councilwoman Swerengen, I mean, I just noticed, I looked around, uh, all the members gone. You can continue with your presentation, but I just wanted to put that out there. So if there's anything you guys decide you wanna discuss or make a motion on, we cannot. Go ahead.
I realize you said you have, uh, gone to Shelby County Schools and attempt to communicate some of the problems that are stemming at the terminal from the youth. However, there are some adults that are contributing to the same problem. And one of the main things, they are asking for you to have security, to go to the outside where the problems lie rather than having them on the inside.
I understand. That's why we want to enhance the secu- because there's, there's a need for the security on the inside as well. So we need to enhance the security, like I said, with, with, with potential, uh, off-duty MPD officers to, uh, for the, for the, the, just the sheer physical presence of a secure environment, and hopefully we will not have that, uh, those issues as we move forward through the, the end of the school year.
So those are some issues that I would like to see addressed, that the constituents are, are, are really torn with, the hold times, the late pickups and missing their appointments, um, the calls not being returned within an hour. And lastly, it seems like MATA is receiving, uh, uh, dismal perception among those that support the new service. I would like for you to, um, put a little bit more PR time in trying to turn that image around. When I'm in the meetings, they are reaching out for you all to be more hospitable, more, um, user-friendly, uh, to be more responsible and responsive, and they are continuously complaining about it, and I have not seen any efforts, of course, it's not in this packet, that's making necessary corrections so that they can be some happy riders and not those that are very disgusted with how things are being handled. So I would like for you to please, uh, utilize your PR person to see what kind of, uh, creative things that you can do to establish more relationship, a friendly relationship with your riders.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Swerengen. Signal number, council members in the queue. Mr. Rosenfeld, thank you for bringing this item before us. Um, and, uh, thanks, Councilman Jones, for, for rallying the troops. That's what you call teamwork. Yeah, I, I see Councilman Ford out there, so we're good. Um, Brooke, please write, uh, Councilman Jones, honorary council member for the day. All right, um, now we will go to public comments. Uh, I do have, uh, several cards, and, um, I'm gonna call you in this order. Please come up, state your name and address for the record. I have Michael Kane, Minister Yahweh, Betty Robinson, Stephen Simmons, and Walter Brody in that order. Again, Michael Kane, Minister Yahweh, Betty Robinson, Stephen Simmons, Walter Brody. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Kane, fifty-one thirty-two Steuben, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-three-four. And I'm here to talk about resolution number thirty that was on the April twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen city council agenda. That was the resolution that would establish a minimum wage of fifteen dollars and fifty cents for all Memphis City employees. I think this is a well-meaning resolution but will lead to unintended consequences. Wages should be determined by the skills or lack of skills of the worker and, and the free market. If there, if this resolution passes, it will be just the first step in bringing additional minimum wage increases to the city of Memphis. Many industries, including the restaurant industry, are increasingly using automation to replace workers, and that is often the result of well-meaning politicians promoting minimum wage increases. One of the roots of the minimum wage laws in this country was the Davis Bacon Act of nineteen thirty-one, which was passed as a result of white unions complaining about black construction workers being willing to work for lower wages. The group of people minimum wage hurts most is young men ages fourteen to nineteen. What all young men, men need at that age is a job opportunity. The wage doesn't matter- The wage doesn't matter as much. In your teen years, you need to learn to show up on time consistently, follow the boss's instructions, treat your boss and bosses and the customers with respect, and learn the consequences of failing to do those things adequately. Young men also need to learn that pay raises come when you do a good job and help your employer make a good profit or fulfill its mission in the case of a nonprofit organization. The group of people the minimum wage hurts second most is entrepreneurs. If there was no minimum wage, entrepreneurs will be unleashed to start businesses and give job opportunities to tons of additional workers. And I see that my time is about up, but I think the minimum wage is, it should be abolished, not raised. The government has no business interfering with otherwise lawful business transactions between potential employers and potential employees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Minister Yahweh, Betty Robinson, Stephen Simmons, Walter Brody in that order.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Minister Sekure Yahweh, 838 Walker Avenue, Park 104. I did have an opportunity to meet with the President of MLGNW. We had talked on a few issues, then we had a chance to meet a few minutes ago, and I was able to voice in a request that was made by Councilman Martavis in terms of having someone who have the information as it relates to the geotoxic costogenic, neurotoxic hazardous waste poisonous in the drinking water that's causing Memphis to be the sickest city in the nation. And we will be working on getting Dr. Hizzi or Hizzi to come in here, into Memphis and possibly give that testimony. He is also the Vice President of one of the eleven unions of EPA, which have over seven thousand members and of professionals, scientists, and et cetera, who came to the conclusions that I have also uncovered in my four or five years of research on this situation of the poisoning that's in our drinking water, and we're not paying any attention. Let me apologize also, the last time that I was here, I said that I, I mentioned a lawsuit. Let me please change that. I, I was just reflecting as a great-great-grandfather who is concerned about his children and his children's children and being poisoned and nobody paying any attention. That bothered me. But then I came to the conclusion of the dumbing down process that is going on in the United States at this particular time, and especially here in Memphis being a strategic city, we are really being dumbed down, and I can begin to see the effects of it. Anytime you can bring scientific information and say that you are being poisoned based on a lie and a fraud that was generated in 1931, eighty-seven years ago, and it still holds true today. We will be meeting the President now in terms of hoping that you can move and straighten out this problem of poisoning our children.
Thank you, sir. Betty Robinson, Stephen Simmons. Betty Robinson, going once, going twice, gone. Stephen Simmons and Walter Brody in that order.
My name is Stephen Simmons. I live at 781 Lee Street, Memphis, Tennessee, 38107. I just wanted to ask Councilman Boyd, on that copy of that report that you say you looked at, could you give me a copy of that? The accident report where it said that the truck that I was working on, the brake wasn't set properly on? Because I can't seem to get one.
It was information, I could request it, but certain information they won't release, but I could request.
I thought that was public record.
Uh, when it comes to medical records.
Well, it's not a medical record. This is an accident report or incident report, whichever one they want to call it.
Well, I will work and request information, see if I can get it for you. One is, one is, will you please send an email to request Mr. Simmons' accident file, please, ma'am? And we have his number. Here's his card, just so we can contact them once after we received anything. He's requesting the accident report that's on file with the city of Memphis of his incident when he, when the truck fell. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brody. Walter Brody. Okay, there he is.
Good evening. It's going into the day. I'm Walter Brody, I stay at 4256 Lebetta Cole, Memphis, Tennessee, 38109. It's the end of the day and the prayer. And Father, I want to thank you once again, Father God. Continue to bless all the City Council members, Father God. Father God, continue to bless everybody who behind the scenes is working, all the men and women. Father God, bless the security guards. Father God, bless all the policemen. Father God, bless all the firemen. Bless all our leaders. Father God, continue to bless both our mayors. Father God, continue to bless Shelby County Commission. Father God, bless all the teachers, students. Father God, bless all, all the leaders. Father God, continue to bless our President of the United States of America, all the Republican, Democrat, Independent. Father God, bless him, man, woman, child, in this city, this state, this country, and all around the world in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you, God.